All the meeting order please, um, we put Joe down as excused absence. Mike, we're not going to vote on anything, so I'm not going to seat you, but you can participate in the meeting. Do we have any minutes done yet Carol? That's fine. Um, new business conceptual. Diane Samosa, DBA Brazen Penny LLC and DBA Country Bumpkins Campground and Cabins. Discuss options to the needs site plan review, SPR approval to convert the property from business use campground to residential use. Is there anyone here for this? Paul?
I have, I have a question. So this was advertised as a work session. So use a work session. We don't take any public input.
Right. There's not going to be any public, I mean. Want to have any, any hearing on anything anyway, so.
Even conceptual, so we'll just.
Right. Mm-hmm. I mean, you don't take public, you don't take comment and conceptual anyway.
Right. Okay, just ask.
And, and work session and public hearing.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you don't take public comment and conceptual anyway.
Just checking. I just want to make sure we're.
Yep. So.
So there's no one here anyway.
All right, Carol, you familiar what they want to do? Well, I mean, she just. Right. I bet, I mean, they ever, well, they must have owners, they have an owner's quarters there now. You have owner's quarters there now at the campground.
What are they going to be doing with it?
We don't know.
Are they looking to close the campground and turn, make it into multiple residentials?
Okay, well, all right. So we don't have enough information to make a decision. All right. Let's move on. Okay.
Well, she's not here then.
Show's arrived. All right, complaint. About a Joanne Moser, co-owner of map 113 lot 11. Solicited as owned by Claude B Dumont Tal, Kia of Alien, Alien Dumont, 28 Franklin Street, Lincoln, New Hampshire, 03251. Complaint about site work being done by Peter Marlowe, DBA Digmark Development Corporation, 258 West Manchester Street, Lowell, Mass. 01852. Without stormwater management plan to the following properties causing flooding along Franklin Street. Map 113, lot 10, 34 Franklin Street, and map 113 lot 9, Franklin Street land only. And where does Franklin Street end? Does Franklin Street end in a continued line with her property boundary? With a property boundary line? Or does it end within the property boundary lines of map 113 lot 10? All right. Is there someone here for this? One up.
This is a, um.
We don't.
This is an enforcement issue from what I.
Well, let's hear, yeah, I, let's hear her case.
It's an enforcement issue. It should be taken up with a board of select, not the planning board.
Can you, all right, Carol, can you help with a microphone? I didn't hear what Carol said either. Yep.
Right.
That's it.
I'm on the button.
The picture's talking to myself.
Okay. Okay.
Or a dictation, a dictation.
Sounds like an enforcement issue.
Well, we don't know. Let her make her case and we can decide.
Hi. Joanne Moser and 28 Franklin Street. It's my family home. I was here. Last December and the reason I am here today is I have been in contact with. The selectman, the town manager. Uh, Carol. And then I was referred to Nate. Um, and Nate, I texted him and he, this is what he said to me. He said, I have seen all the photos. I am well aware of the situation. It is going through the planning department. And I, because I wanted to meet with him. So I said, all right, well.
Great.
Then I'll be at the next meeting, you know, to bring this up. I mean. The property has been. Totally redone. And last December I had asked for a storm water management plan to be done. Um, the town went and looked at it. They said, well, it snowed. We really couldn't, but they never went back to look at it. Everything has changed. He raised the grade up. So now everything that used to be a flat road. All the water is coming down Franklin Street. Coming down in front of me, Mr. Williams going into Leah's driveway. Most of it's going into Leah's driveway.
So, so is this on the area? If I could ask, just for a little clarification. Where on the map we're talking about? Is this those three houses or?
No, this is Franklin Street. Franklin Street's a dead end street. Um, my mom's house is on the end. Leah's is here. There used to be a trailer there that used to, um. Be owned. And they demolished the trailer, took all the trees down. And have done all kinds of site work. Put a fence up. Probably on the, on the border, right on the line. And have, have raised the level. So now when it rains. All the water comes down on the street. I mean, if we don't address this this winter. We're going to have nothing but ice there. And my other issue is if you look at the tax map. The Franklin Street ends at where my border ends. It doesn't go all the way.
Oh, wait, pass some of all those properties?
No, right at my property.
What do you mean when it's, Franklin Street doesn't go all the way?
On the tax map. It ends there. Because then his property begins right at the end of that street. On Le Breck Street. They have an easement for plowing and for the town. And so what I'm trying to figure out is. Why do we not have an easement to go a little bit further for the, because obviously the plow has for years. Gone straight up. And when Lottie was there, she, he would, they would go to the right. And I'm just saying right now. There's no easement. So there's nothing there to protect. Her driveway, which is on the other side. Or for the town. As far as plowing. It's all just. Hearsay and gentlemen's agreements.
You know, the board, we're not the ones to determine where Franklin Street begins and ends. That would be the, you know, the road agent would know that.
Right. How, how, well, I was just going by the, what the tax maps have, like Grafton, wait, if you go onto Grafton, onto the county. You know, that's how the, that's how they have it set up. And that's where I looked and I saw that Le Breck Street has an easement for the town. For plowing and I'm like. Why doesn't Franklin have one also?
Okay. It could just be the rap, map is incorrect. We don't, we don't know.
Right. I mean, I don't think so because it was recently surveyed and there are pins there.
Right.
So. Um, but.
You brought this to the select.
I have in December I went. I've had, maybe I, um, I reached out again when the flooding was really bad. And, um, Karina, I waited about a week and then she did get back to me and she told me. She said, Carol, inform me of the issue. Peter is out of state, but will return tomorrow. Our fire chief is meeting with him. To discuss a plan of action. And this was sent to me on July 1st. And I haven't heard anything.
That was on July 1st?
Yep.
You should.
But December was the initial.
So this, this is Franklin, Franklin Street that I'm looking at?
Yes.
And this is Marlowe's property here?
Wish we had a tax map. Be nice.
This is Marlowe's.
Okay. And how much is, has he, um, built it up? I mean, it looks. It looks pretty flush with Franklin Street.
It's, it's a little bit of a, okay, where else is the water going to run off? We never had. Is it because he? Worked on the whole property and, you know, got everything all worked out.
Hmm.
When was the first time you brought this to the select?
Anything going in, anyone sell it? Yeah.
Not mine. It will, if it goes in anybody's, it's going to be Leah's. But she said her driveway, you can see the silt in the road.
It looks like it goes across the street and then, and the end of her house.
Yeah, and it goes in her.
Okay.
And you can see the silt, you know, from everything getting pushed through. You know.
Go all the way down to Main Street?
It does.
So it goes, on one side it will enter Jersey mines, but it didn't, anyway, half. Once you go just about halfway down the street. It starts at the.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we wait for Carol to come back, ask her a question. All right. Do you have anything else you'd like to tell us in the meantime?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I think that was all I wanted to, I do.
The first time when you brought it in December 4th, whose attention did you bring it to?
Um, the selectman. I think OJ was there.
We were all there.
Yeah.
I, I, I. If I remember correctly, the, the, um. Kind of the point of that conversation was more about the extension of the road and connecting the ends of the two roads. Is that not correct?
Well, I was afraid he was going to do that, which he actually has. He has that opening there. He did open. There is access from Franklin Street to Le Breck Street now.
But that's all his private property?
That's all his private property. He's allowed to do that. I mean, but until he puts a private drive sign there in a way. I can take my truck through there, right? Because I don't know.
Did he apply for a driveway? Was there already existing driveway permit that goes from both places? Okay, we need a town driveway permit.
Mm-hmm.
For sure.
There was not existing driveway.
It was street parking.
Huh?
It was street parking because there was a trailer at the end of the road.
Remembered that.
Yep. There was a.
Right, Harrington Street?
No, that's Le Breck Street.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, um, your grandmother.
Okay.
That was there. And she parked on the street. It was street parking.
Okay.
Hey, we need a driveway permit from the town to be able to construct a new driveway.
The, the issue we discussed in December was the. Extending or connecting the roads.
And we wanted a storm management plan also.
Um, and at that time he hadn't. And I guess in our estimation, he hadn't figured that, that we were aware of.
No, you guys went and you said it snowed and you couldn't tell.
Okay.
But nobody ever went back. And since then, now it's totally cleared.
Has he disturbed more than 17,000 square feet doing this?
Oh, yes. Yeah. And more than half, half of the lot.
That whole lot.
Okay.
The whole lot.
So it should have. So it sounds to me like. This is code enforcement.
Right. That's, I agree with you.
That's what, I mean, in December code enforcement should have gone out there and said, hey, look. You just there more than whatever. Um, you got to go in and see Carol and make your application out and.
Yep.
And do it. If he didn't do it, then. It's a reason to town, to me, for the towns, through the board of selectmen. Because their enforcement to send them a letter and say, hey. You know, this is what you need here.
I mean, I'm all for having rules and regulations, but we gotta, we gotta enforce it.
Uh, well, I don't know who it is now. In, in December, it was Ron Beard, I believe.
No, it was Ryan Fairbrother.
Orion. Oh, it was both, I think.
Do you, are you looking at the same thing that we just got handed?
I didn't get one.
I guess my question is on map, on lot number 10. There you go. Is, is that the mobile home?
That you're talking about? Yes. That is the mobile home and they use the car.
Okay, so, 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 so just to be clear. That parking, although it may have appeared to be on, on the road. It's well into their, their. Lot.
Yep.
Okay, so, so there was not, there was not, it was not on-street parking there. It was off-street parking.
The street is, that's, that's where.
When he's.
It's not the street if it's on their land. You know what I mean?
The one, yeah. The street ends here. This is.
His trailer in his garage.
So we're saying that. Where did, where is our town's easement to continue plowing back here? Because Leah's driveway is over here. So there's no easement. In order. So basically the town stops being responsible for anything. Right there at that line.
Between 10 and 11, as I was saying.
That's what she's saying. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, between 10 and 11, that's where the town would stop.
And, and you're saying Leah's driveway is beyond that stopping point? Okay.
Always has.
And do you, do you have an easement? Is there anything that says you can cross his land to get onto your land?
Lincoln's been Lincoln.
Right. Okay. Okay. I, I mean, that's not.
Franklin Street is a dirt road and had just had like a little run around. Mr. King, he was there when I grew up.
Well, thank you.
Mr. King.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there used to be most champagne where Mr. Williams is now, and then Mr. King. Yeah. It's always been there.
You have to find out where the street really does end.
Well, I think, I think there's, there's a couple of things here. Regardless of where the street ends, regardless of the exist, you want to talk, go ahead.
Um, I did talk to Nate about this.
Yeah.
And he said he does plow up. Where you see the two little lines on lot 10.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He does plow there and there's some kind of, I can't remember what he said now. It's a manhole or.
Yep.
There's something there and he cleans that out or he maintains that. So he doesn't know for sure whether.
Right.
You know, what the town has, but when he started, um, he was. Uh, told that he, that's what he does. He plows to the end of the tarred area.
If you look at lot 10, it almost, it almost looks like there's a paper road. Right at the end of Franklin Street, there are two lines.
If you, if I, if you want me to print out the aerial, you can see it. It's paved.
It is paved and there is a manhole cover.
Okay.
But that's why I'm.
It's private property.
It is private property.
You can't do that unless you have a. An agreement with the town to maintain that. I went through that with the property where I was.
Right.
When you say you can't.
Sewer lines.
You should say, you're not supposed to. If this has existed for 100 years.
Unless you've got a document, it's, it was the same thing with where I was.
Well, well, I mean, it could be an easement on file that we haven't found.
I, I guess it, it. We can discuss it all night. Is a manhole there that's owned by the town? Is that on their land? Is that on an easement? I don't know.
Well, the manhole was. Manhole can't be owned on the town if it's on a private, his property.
And this is good saying it's private. That's all I'm saying too.
Sounds to me like an eas. Be.
I mean, it's illegal. That Franklin Street matters, a legal matter.
Right. It, it is a legal matter because if he's going to go on to private property. And do some septic work or does something for the sewer system. Well, then why not come to my private property and do mine too? You, you know, this is considered private property.
The only thing this board can do is if, if, I think, what I'm hearing is that they've disturbed more than the 17,000 square feet.
Right.
Or half the lot. Then it would require.
Yeah. So this one would be, have to be at least 50% or 55% of the lot.
Fifty-five.
Just because of the size of the lot.
Then it would require stormwater management.
Yep.
Other than that, we can't, I mean, we're not.
Yeah, the only thing he hasn't disturbed is the 10 feet from my property line to his line. That is the only thing.
Are you 11?
I am.
11. She's 11.
I'm 11.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, Carol.
Okay, we, we did look into, um, what he has over there. He had a demolition permit. Um, and Nate said that he did, he did, uh, straight flatten out the lot. He doesn't, Nate doesn't believe that he's, uh, raised it. But he has, he has cleaned it out. He has. Had a demolition permit. We don't, it doesn't trigger the stormwater management ordinance. Um, with the demolition permit. He hasn't come in for a land use permit to replace it. We know he's going to eventually. Uh, but he hasn't come in for that. Uh, Ron Beard supposedly did go over, um. And tried to catch, uh, Mr. Mar, Marlowe, but. He did not catch him over there. He's apparently away on vacation somewhere. So. Whether Ron's followed up or not, I don't know.
I mean, why all of a sudden with the water now, you know?
It's the same thing that happened to you.
Isn't, and it's a flat street. And I'll talk at once.
He's disturbed more than 55% of the lot or 17,000 square feet.
Yep.
It, it requires site plan review.
He's stormwater management.
Site plan review is all, right, all part of that. So if he's done that.
Look at the org.
If, if he's done that, then he needs to commit site plan review. Other than that.
No, the only permit he got was to just, to demolish, to demolish that trailer at the end. That's the only permit he has.
He's gone beyond that. He's disturbed the lot and he needs to commit.
Well, that's, I mean, he doesn't have to build in order to disturb.
He's already put a shadow.
He's already put a shadow.
No, no, no. I'm just saying that, that. Carol mentioned that he hasn't come in for an application to build anything. He doesn't have to.
Right.
Build anything to trigger stormwater management.
He just has to disturb the property.
Disturbance.
That's all. Code enforcement, when someone goes and looks at it and says you've disturbed more than 55% of your lot for 17,000 square feet. He brings it to the board of selectmen, code enforcement, code, board of selectmen or the enforcement agency, they then.
Yeah.
Go to the script and say, look, you, it's a cease and desist right now and you need to commit site plan review. It's that simple.
So what we're saying. Where is the home? Domination is.
We're, we're not talking about development. We're talking rest. Residential law, yeah. It's a residential law. All development.
And, and residential lots. It's a residential lot.
It's a residential law.
Look how we're going.
Yep, the sentence, the other part of the sentence. And it goes on to define what disturbance is.
Right. So he just needs to be informed by the board of selectmen because they're the enforcement agency that.
Yeah.
But someone wants to make sure and go over there and, and see that he's disturbed that and.
Yeah.
Tell Mr. Marlowe he needs to cease and desist and that he, he's created an issue that he needs to take care of.
Mm-hmm.
That's up to, we can't do that.
Right.
And then to al- also. Follow up and find where there might be an easement to go any further. Past that manhole cover for plowing?
If it's not recorded in your D or if it's not, the town doesn't have a copy of anything, then it doesn't exist.
Okay. So it's something that the town maybe needs to do?
Hold on, Carol, I didn't hear what you said.
That statute of, but.
It should be.
It's like, it's like.
It should.
You're claiming adverse possession, basically.
Well, that's something that the two property owners have to take care of, not the town.
Well. But if, if you, if you look, I mean, I don't want to get too much into this because it's not our business.
That's my point.
Okay, great. All right. So. The business as far as where Franklin Street ends goes to.
Administration.
That, yeah, that would be.
I don't think you could put a request in to Karina for clarification.
Okay.
Because she's the town manager.
I didn't.
And, and she should be able to. Research that or authorize research of that so that you could find out.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. If there was an agreement between the original, when Lottie Goodwood put her trailer there and there was an agreement between her and the town. For the town to plow there.
If there was something there and.
There was something there.
Yep. And then as far as a disturbance of the property and water. I will, I would write something up, either a letter. Bring it into Karina that.
I did write a letter already.
Okay.
To the town.
It's.
I just haven't gotten anywhere, so.
OJ, can you handle that?
Hold on, Carol, I can't hear. Say that again. Okay.
Well, I, I, I mean, even before the select, we're not going to go out and measure. And, and make a judgment. Uh, is that something we could start?
Oh, thank you.
The planning department at this point.
That's code enforcement. Who's code enforcement now?
It's part of the planning department, part of the administration.
Part of the administration.
It could start, it could start tomorrow morning. As far as finding Ron or someone. I'm not going to go out and measure.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting you do.
Determining disturbance by the legal definition, et cetera.
Whoever is code enforcement needs to go over and do that.
Okay. Because if we wait till Monday, all we're going to do is then trigger that. So I'm just saying it could's. It doesn't have to wait to Monday night to start.
Right, right.
I'm not saying someone is available tomorrow morning. I'm saying the process of moving that forward.
I mean, you can see it in the pictures.
Look at it by Monday.
Stir it.
Even if, even if no one can look at it by Monday night. It, it, is this unreasonable that, that we could?
I mean, I should be able to.
She's on vacation. This whole week. So, I mean, it's still not going to start till Monday.
It's, it's been, it's been there since the winters, so.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, I hear you.
This is tonight. We're not talking about the last of the history. I can't make a phone call in January because it's already July.
Um, could I ask just one question?
May, yeah.
On putting up a fence. Do you have, um, rules as far as should they be two feet?
One feet.
One foot.
One foot.
He's right on the line. Maybe you guys should measure that too.
Well, that's, those are, those are some of the things, true, that you want in, in your letter to the. Board of Selectmen. Is there enforcement?
Okay.
You want to bring those things up.
Okay. I know, I just have. Sometimes you just get.
Yeah. And if you're not getting anywhere with a board of selectmen. I guess.
You know, old school's always got a good way to.
I guess I would stand out on Main Street with a sign that says, Board of Selectmen aren't doing their job.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. We're going to appoint a, um. CIP committee representative. So Paul's been doing it for many years. Um. He's the chairman of the CIP committee. Um. Is there a motion to reappoint Paul to the CIP committee?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Steve made the motion. Joe seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Abstain.
All abstain. So four to zero. Yeah, so four yeses and one abstention. Okay. Welcome back.
Thanks. We already started.
Few things, um. Some discussions about possible changes. And. We want to further define or change the definition of adequate usable space.
Let's start reading, reading the current definition.
Oh. What's on me?
What page is that on? I think.
I'm looking. It's not in the definitions.
I think that was the problem. So with, we're at the end of the zoning, some page.
Yeah. It goes on like page 93 or 94.
Of the land use plan order?
No. Yeah, maybe it's on the sub, in the subdivision regulations.
Under which one, Jim?
Sorry, sir.
Under which?
Regulate subdivision. I think that's.
I mean, he's going to have ninety something. Division regulation. Page four. On open space. Yeah, we're bound to, yeah.
Yeah.
Need a little haystack here.
That's what I thought, ninety-three and ninety-four.
Eight nine.
And the site plan review, not on the.
Oh, sorry.
And a fault land use plan, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, what, what page is it, ninety? It's looking in wrong order. Page ninety-four in the loophole.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have it in.
I don't have it in here either. Eight ninety.
Definition of. Of adequate usable space.
Sunday.
It's not in.
Page ninety-four. Get in front of me.
You get it? On ninety-four, page ninety? It's ninety-four land use plan orders.
I, I, yeah. I'm not reading, I don't know what's in your book, though.
Huh?
I'm, I'm reading.
Land orders, and I'm on page ninety-four and I don't see them.
Yeah.
The March, what's, what's the version?
Ninety-six.
Oh, here we go. Board of Adjustment.
Okay, the page is changed from.
Adequate usable space. Ninety-four to what, ninety-six?
Ninety-six. Okay.
I'm on the stacks. Usable, oh. Definition of usable space, not adequate.
About, which was uh. We looked on page ninety-six. There was two people.
Okay. Why would we want to change that?
What's that again?
Why would we want to change that?
You just, because your question was asked, I don't, nope.
I'm sorry, Carol. And does it say that in the ordinance? I don't see that.
It's probably, if it applies only to commercials, probably in site plan regulations.
I don't see anything. Shows that it was. You see, we want to see anything, anything in there that shows whether it's commercial or residential?
Well, this is um. Talks about special exception by the Board of Adjustment, but it doesn't really say. I mean, it insinuates if someone appeals a subdivision, someone asks for a special exception. Or a subdivision, and they would apply this criteria.
Mostly just wet and steep, huh? So, right. Looks like a board of adjustment.
Yeah, that's. If someone has a, basically.
And then they would have to apply the criteria to it and.
Right.
And they could use this definition to help them determine whether or not it's used in this space.
Right.
It's nothing that the plan.
Not right now, but that's, that's, I mean, that's the question. Does anyone think we need to talk about it?
I think I'd like to talk to. The attorney, but whether or not we even need to go into this.
Well, what is the?
It seems as if there was a difference of opinion between. Um, two attorneys that were dealing with. The answer, right? Jason had it, had an opinion. And the CBA had their, had.
Court Al Johnson, or Johnston.
Right, they had a s- opinion on the specific question posed to them. Okay, neither one had an opinion on. Usable space as a definition. Um, but both agreed. That this definition is included under the Board of Adjustments. Paragraph. What is usable space? When we talk about, when the planning board talks about, what's, what is our definition of usable space? Technically.
We don't have.
We don't have. So, so that would be the first question. We don't need to ask a lawyer. Whether we have one or not, we don't have one. Should we have?
That's the question.
I, I think that's a question that we should answer.
Well, we asked that question, and we should also ask. Question about what can it be used for, or what, what is not included in that?
Right, so.
That's when we, we've talked about this, and that's why we were going to put it from here into the main body, right? And then we said, wait a minute here.
Right.
It might affect too much.
Right.
We better get a little bit of legal advice and figure out what it is, whether we really even want to put this in the main body.
Right, so I mean, and that, that kind of what we're doing tonight, step one. Of that. We asked.
Wouldn't it be nice to talk with Jason and say, what are the? Benefits and, or pros and cons of either having it in the main body versus not as far as what? Whether or not we need to determine this? Makes best of, given the consideration of, but that, oh. And Jason then. His opinion is different.
The first, before we even ask that question to the attorney, the question should be answered by this board is. Do we want to define what usable space is? Would that be helpful in, for us in making decisions going forward? To say, this is, you know, Mr. Developer, this is what we call usable space. Then they either meet our requirement or they don't, and we won't have this.
What it does.
So you could, you could start. You have, um. There's A higher than small A again, says the definition of usable space. You can cross off the definition of. And just put usable space and put the rest of that sentence in with the definitions in the front of the ordinance. And then you'd have to decide what you want to exclude. Usable space going from there.
We may not want to exclude anything.
Right, that's fine, too, but at least you'll have a definition. Or you might not even want to move it. You might want to leave it as is.
Right now, practice has been to exclude. Wetlands. And shoreline.
I could probably see those two. I could probably see those two, but I couldn't see. The. Drainage or, just to me, you want. Usable space should be able to be used for drainage, best, we're trying to get people to do stormwater management and take care of drainage, so. By not allowing that in there. It might go to the. People not paying attention to it rather than paying attention to it. Usable space should be. I mean, the calculation of, of drainage should be in usable space.
Yeah.
So you support, you're supporting. Fact that you want people to take care of their drainage.
In other words, if you have a lot that's minimum lot size fifteen thousand square.
Or a small lot.
A thousand square feet is taken up by drainage structures. You don't want to say the lot has to be sixteen thousand.
You want, you, you want them to be able to, to include that drainage in there, I would think.
I mean, to me, I think that's fine because, you know, you're not going to have a house that takes up more than a couple thousand square feet. A lot like that.
You want to support that drainage stuff, I think.
Okay.
And the public.
No.
No.
Well, that would be. That would be something that, when they came in for a subdivision application, we would review these association docs and this related easements, so it's.
But I think we want them to be able to, no matter whether you're a big developer or a small lot on. We want them to be able to count their drainage. Those stormwater management, if, even if we say stormwater management. Structures into. Their calculation. Because if we don't. Then, as you said, depending upon the size of things, it. Might make it too cumbersome to be able to call it a lot. You know, it's going to restrict a lot of people's ability to build.
Yep.
I mean, what you want them to do, I would think, would be to go ahead and build and do their, you know, i- i- if they have a drainage structure on there, and even if it's. Takes up a little bit more than a lot than it needs to take up. As long as it's not. Hampering their, their um. Setback or their ability to maintain that drainage structure. You know, the stormwater management, because of some of those stormwater managers have systems. You know, so as long as they can maintain that. To me, it would make sense to, to leave it in there and say that it's okay to use that as part of your calculation, but that just makes.
I, I, I think in. Looking at this, we have to be clear that counting it as usable space or not counting it as usable space. Has nothing to do with who owns it, who maintains it. You could have one drainage structure that, that. Covers three or four lots partially. Okay, and that doesn't change who owns it, who, who, I mean, that.
No, no, I.
Whole separate conversation. I just, I mean, just to Carol's point, that. We're, we're not. We're not saying if it's on your lot, you own it and you have to take care of.
No, we're not going to.
Wait. What's that? Okay, but how many subjects?
See, I would think that that's not correct, and, and a develop, because in a development, it's taking. The considerations given to it by the association and their, their responsibility for the overall one, like up over here in South Peak. They may have, at South Peak, they have. Um, certain sections that are. And, and one development, and all of the drainage comes down into it. So it's, it's the association that's responsible for it.
Right, but, but. It's different because that's, that's the property it's on is on common land owned by them. Right.
Right. But it's still.
But what if it's on someone's lot? What if you hold your whole neighborhood?
Who's responsible for it?
Right, what if your whole neighborhood drains into your front yard and you have a drainage structure in the front yard? And the homeowners association is responsible for caring for it, maintaining it. Planning it once a year, all of that stuff. If you're correct, you're saying that if something goes wrong with that and it causes flooding or damage or. It's the home, it's the landowner's problem?
I don't think that's correct.
Yeah, no.
I'd like to check, check with Jason, but I bet you that there's something that, when they build something like that. It's on a certain person's lot, that there, there's some sort of legal, legalese. Something in, in the association documents that say, even though it's on law, so and so, they are not responsible for everybody else. Because everybody else is contributing, so.
What if you have a utility pole on, on your lot? There's an easement for that. If that falls and hits somebody, is that the homeowner's problem?
Oh.
So, I mean.
At Loon is like ski trails. We just did that.
Somebody's, people's lots.
On private property, but there's an easement to cross it. If someone falls and dies on that ski trail.
Or it's icy.
Can they sue the homeowner?
Well, yeah, but the attorney will sue everybody just because they're there.
Yeah.
There's a lot of what ifs here, too.
We, we. Hold on, you can all talk at once.
Which is supposed to have. A active thing that has no active picture way, has no members of the board or directors. None of, none of the features that we have, obviously now. Each one of two. Has a.
Well, they have an active one. They have a board of directors. I would say town sun is, is.
Oh.
They. But they're in association with a, with a, with a board, and a board president.
Alright, so Beechwood one does not.
Beechwood one does.
Alright. I, I would suggest for the sake of moving this along. We assume that we're going to run any changes we make by Jason before we formally vote to adopt them.
Yeah.
And I would say, I would like to say that we would, we would. And I would say, I would like to say that we would, we would. Assume that, just like with a telephone pole or with any other. Structure on an easement. That that liability is assumed by the structure owner, not the not the landowner where the easement is on.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think what Carol's saying is what if that owner, the utility pole goes belly up and just leaves the pole there to rot? I mean, I don't know, maybe we're just dealing with too many what ifs. What else have any thoughts?
I always thought that it was a. If someone had a telephone pole or a self structure on my property, I would expect company like.
Yeah.
A lot that's their business, they need to take care of.
Right.
That considered.
No, it's 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 not, it's still the utility company most in most cases, yeah.
In Lincoln? Oh, alright, I said I've never signed it. We we just, we just approved a bridge with the abutments on private property. I mean, if I were a landlord, I'd be more worried about a bridge.
Ski bridge, Jim.
Than than a than a.
Drainage.
Than a drainage ditch.
I don't think it's something like that, a company or.
Right, but what, but okay, but what she's we're saying, you know, yeah, there's an HOA response, well, what if that HOA goes belly up?
This, what what does the RSA about HOAs that go belly up? Can the town go in and fix a bridge or fix a culvert and and build the HOA? There's gotta be something.
But they're bankrupt, they're gone.
And we can we can we go the homeowners in that age.
Right, that's I would think their homeowners in the original subdivision could go after them, that would be the most logical.
It would become a private legal event.
Yeah.
What it would be, same as anything, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't know if if it would. That was a much more complicated situation, Loon Mountain was involved in that.
Really, that what happened was, when they went ahead and put all the utilities in. Put it all in, well, some stand, some places, some places, they put holes in the drainage pipes, he left wise running right through them. Put a sub stand when they put them in. Definitely, it was supposed to be up the shirt code before they turned over the town. But I don't know, we know the one, they went to the county, recorded and transferred to what, that I don't even, without without even know about it. When he left it back, we found that we owned it.
They used to have, Beechwood one has always been maintained by, was always maintained. By Loon Mountain, and it had a. It had a division, it was called Loon Realty Corporation, Loon Realty Corporation took care of all of the. Utilities and road maintenance and all of the homeowners in old Beechwood, which went from where. The exit of Riverblade, all the way back out, Lower Black Mountain Road, and then all the way up around upper. Beechwood, and then up up to bear, that's bear bottom, up 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 through that, that was all old Beechwood, and all those homeowners participated, right? All those homeowners participated in a loon realty corporation, and they were charged a fee besides their homeownership. And they took that Loon Realty Corporation money, took care of. Water sewer repairs, stuff like that, I know that because I was in charge of it.
Hmm.
So a- a- and and it worked that anytime there was a water sewer main break, Loon Realty. That's sad, because what happened was the town took over the roads. That there was a document where the town took over the, an agreement, there was an agreement made between. The town and might have been craving back this battery and.
You know who was that?
Oh, yeah, maybe I think it was gravy, but they, it it was a handshake agreement, and the town agreed. To do, un- until they built the mountain, once mountain club was built, they did, it was actually a written agreement for that portion of it. Said that because of that wall and all of that, they said, we don't want to use, if that wall falls down, and the town said, well. We'll take care of, I think it was, the top six inches of the road, and the rest was Loon Mountain.
Yeah, that was a weird agreement.
That was, yeah.
I think we need to, we need to. There, because we're talking about drainage structures. And yet, in in reality, we're permitting bridge abutments on private property, um, you know. Drainage culverts on private property, all of these things with easements. So so if if we're saying that. We, that should affect us whether or not we count something as usable space, then I think it's got to apply to everything like that, every structure. That's that's within an easement, I'm not sure if that's realistic.
Well, I think, I don't think we wanna penalize people and take away. Square footage calculations, because it's, it's either a bridge abutment or a stormwater protection thing or something like that. I think we wanna encourage people to be able to do the right thing and include it in the calculation. And I thought that that that's where we were, what what you're looking at was. With usable spaces, what are you going to include that's usable, and just, it could be a very broad thing and say that everything's included in that. You know, and then.
So I mean, the 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 basic definition is relatively broad.
Right.
Use, so you would say usable space is any portion of a lot or structure which is designed to be or can be used to support development.
Just leave it like that. We, I I mean, we don't have to have, I don't know that we we would have to have, although OJ brings up good points about the. Um, flood plain and stuff like that.
Well, so that's different.
That's different flood plain and what what did you say?
So so if it's on on page whatever you have ninety six, I'm on ninety four, but excludes. Um, special flood hazard areas.
Right.
Sure, I mean, can we get out through these and just vote whether we should leave them or change them?
I, okay, yeah, that's fine.
I think we we leave that as excluded.
I agree.
Yeah.
Alright, the next one is land defined as protected shoreline in public waters. Um, whose use is restricted under the shoreline protection district areas as defined in the shoreline protection act.
I think we include that too.
Yeah.
So leave that.
Leave that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Land covered by wetlands, water bodies, watersheds.
And and I think I, I think I would end that period, watersheds period, not include drainage systems.
Well, what's a drainage system? Is it that a natural drainage system or is it manmade?
That is the key question, what?
Yeah.
We probably should define drainage systems if we're gonna leave it in, no, but seriously. Is a drainage system something you you build to retain water, or is a drainage system? Um, the water coming down the.
So let's just say a natural drainage system. Ah, may 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 just say natural. Because that goes along with water bodies and.
Yeah.
Well, it does and it doesn't, it's specifically saying.
What cares?
No, no, a natural drainage system would be a pathway where water flows during.
Yeah.
You, but it could be a dry piece of land.
It could be a seasonal, seasonal brook.
Yeah.
That's a natural. So I would leave a natural and natural drainage system. And I don't know if you wanna go by the definition of New Hampshire Wetland Board, I think I would just say a natural drainage system.
Well, you could end it. You could take out land covered by wetlands, water bodies, watersheds, watersheds as defined by New Hampshire Wetlands. Board rules as amended, et cetera, and then put um. Land covered by natural drainage systems, and that would be it.
I think I would take the definition from the.
Yeah, okay.
Well, that further clarifies.
That would get you in trouble when you start to find out what the state puts in there versus what we want.
The question is, the New Hampshire.
I like Jim's idea.
What's that?
Leaving wetlands, water bodies, and watersheds. As defined by the New Hampshire Wetlands Board Rules. As amended administrative rules, WT blah blah blah, and natural drainage systems.
Yeah, well, you put it at the end or in the middle, I guess.
Because the natural drainage system is not defined, unless maybe it is defined under those administrative rules. Okay, let's let's, how about if we look up exactly how? The Wetlands Board Rules define drainage systems.
Yeah, because I think that needs a little more research before we just pop it in there. Alright, next one, land with steep slopes. Well, I mean, I think, you know, we're in a mountain town, we're gonna have a lot of pe-. Pieces that come in nowadays going forward that have steep slopes.
Everywhere, well, I must be building cool as bow, that we need the old criteria, we gotta put it right here.
I think there's a legitimate concern about um, building on steep slopes. As far as your water running downhill, my thought on that is to allow it to be counted as usable space. But. And we don't do this now, but when we get to the Stormwater Management Act. That maybe the criteria triggering stormwater management is different depending on the slope of your land. Like if you take my house, my piece of land, okay, which is, which is about as steep as this. Okay, and you say, if I just, if I disturb fifty percent of my land, I trigger stormwater, that's fine, because. I could probably trigger eighty percent, and it's just all still gonna get down because it's flat. You take a piece of land like this and you say you don't trigger it till fifty percent, well. I bet at forty percent, you're causing all kinds of problems downhill. But you haven't triggered the, so you don't have to, you don't have to define, do a wetlands, um, I mean, a stormwater management.
But I think, OJ, you're not going to, if you're on a steeper slope, you're gonna tend to disturb more of the lot. And you would if you were on a.
You you need more for the retaining wall, etc.
By the time you get in there, build your retaining walls, access to it, you're gonna have to have some sort of engineered. Retainage, you're you're gonna disturb, and I can tell you, we did them up, some of the lots landing that we're looking at, I mean, you, it it's hard not. Not to do that, I mean, you typically end up disturbing more, and and then you go, so so you're you're into the. The um, stormwater management, the only way out of that, that we found, or the only way to mitigate some of that. Is that you end up making a bigger lot, so then you don't disturb as much, but that's good, because then you have better access, you have better. You can handle the water better, so by having a bigger lot, it tends to really, or. Consolidating two lots, you know, I mean, like Joe Lynch, for example, his house he built up there is on three lots. And he's still, it was service had to have stormwater management, because it's such a pig house, but and it disturbed him much a lot. But the one across the street combined two lots, not gonna disturb as fifty percent of that, so they didn't need the stormwater management there. Seventeen thousand square feet, right, or the fifty five percent, but so I mean, there's ways. The I tend to look at it, that. In today's technology, there are so many different things out there now. That that you can build, allow people to build on steep slopes, that. We shouldn't discourage that, because that's basically what we have here, you know.
I I.
So, a- a- and I think that. Those things that they're doing are 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 gonna require people to disturb more of the lot, put in engineered walls, all this other stuff to be able to do that. Still gonna allow, still, most of them are gonna have to have, I can't think of any that are on steep. Lots that don't have to really have that, you know, that that aren't gonna have to have some sort of drainage. Because you still end up getting it to wetlands, and you still end up getting it to, you know, a- all of that. I don't know, I mean, I. I don't think, I don't think we wanna consider steep slopes, I really don't, I think. Take a look at, what problems have we really had, except for one, probably was a human error more than it was any other type of error. At least that's my opinion, I'm not a pro, but I mean, it it's, it's. We haven't, we've got a lot of building in Lincoln that's been on steep slopes and have had very little.
Yeah.
Problems with some of that.
Yeah. As soon as I spend, going to the sea areas in Europe, Austria and Germany, you believe, well, like this here. A lot of times, they don't even stir the salt, they just try piling down for the ground under it and disturb. The road parking going up to it, the middle, middle disturbance, it's lots to be done, using common sense and right engineering, you only fall understated. The slopes, when you live in an area where it's all, everything in town is the slope. Half the most of the link, three quarters link would not be developed right now.
I mean, Lincoln has a pretty, pretty active stormwater management. Plan. Regulation, and it's pretty hard to circumvent most, I mean, if you were really. It's hard to do that. I mean, you look at South Peak that's come in, I mean, their stormwater management for that is, they've had to put a lot of time and money and effort into doing that. You know, I mean, just, it's crazy what people are building on these days, but if they've got the money and they wanna do it. The appropriate way. And who are we to say no, I mean, you gotta think about tax revenue too, I'm not saying that's the only consideration, but, you know, these houses have to build them. With these engineered walls and so forth are are worth bringing a lot of money to the town.
Look, the two they're building now are Coolish Falls.
Yeah.
I mean, I would never build a lot like that, but they have the money for the engineering. I mean, the lots, the engineering is gonna cost more than a house will.
I mean, how many, yeah, we, think about how many problems we've really had, I I I've lived there. Forever, but the people, we didn't have, they probably weren't building back then, a host of slopes anyways, so.
So, I mean, is it consensus to leave the steep slopes in with the special exception and then maybe revisit the stormwater management ordinance? See if we wanna add something in there to trigger it from a steep slope?
Oh, I think we take it out of the. I think we should take it out, the definition of usable space excludes. And it says steep slopes.
We're gonna, we're gonna leave it here under the Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustment.
But the other things, we're gonna try, we're gonna find a space. In the front of the ordinance, that's what we're doing here. So.
But I don't think.
So we're gonna have a definition of usable space, and then we're gonna, you know, we're deciding what usable space excludes, so we've decided, you know. Paragraph one.
So are these our ordinances, or are they the boards, zoning boards' ordinance? Is this?
Well, right now, it's ZBA's, it's ZBA's criteria, but we're thinking what parts worth, the question is what parts of this do we wanna move to the main land use plan ordinance?
Why can't we just take number four out of this? Who's, that's what I'm saying, who's, who's has the right to take number four out, is it, is it by vote of the town, or is it by?
Happy to go to the town meeting.
No matter what we do. Right, in this, let's go to town meeting.
I would suggest that we put this before the town and and take it out, because I think you find that there's a lot of. Business people and a lot of. People who wanna build that that would not want this. And I don't think we should have it, personally.
I don't think we should have two different definitions of usable space. You know. Because we're gonna put this in the same. For the land use plan, you're gonna have one up front, someone's gonna read that, then they're gonna need a special exception, oh, well, usable space is different. Once you get a special exception, I I think it has to be consistent, it it's either includes steep slopes everywhere or doesn't include steep slopes anywhere.
Then I would go with Paul's point, then to take it out.
Take it out. But let let the taxpayer, let the voters.
Oh, no matter.
Yeah, let the voters, put it before them, I mean.
I, I think we had talked about this before the town meeting and agreed. Um, that this, this was an issue and that's why we kind of.
Right, right.
We actually look, right. So, so, um, to take it out is a con- is consistent with what our.
Reason.
Right, reasoning was back then.
Yeah.
Right, um, I agree with that. You know, I don't think it would hurt to, to put it in, uh, put in something in the stormwater management that, that. Has a, a quicker trigger for steep slopes. But if you're correcting that, there hasn't been a problem, but I'm not sure, I don't know.
I have looked at for.
That if you have, you know, if you had a long skinny lot that's like this, you might have a lot of usable space over here. That, that excludes you because you haven't hit fifty percent, but over here, my steep slope drainage is gonna get disrupted. And, and increase.
Look at, you know, I mean, if you start to look at it.
Yeah.
If you take a look in actuality, what's ri- in reality, what's really happened with the developments that we've had, Forest Ridge, which still, I mean, you know. South Peak, uh, Beechwood, uh, the landing, uh, yeah, just, just take a look around. We've, the town like has developed a lot, and we really haven't had any, you know, houses falling off cliffs or raining like.
We've, we've had, um, certainly, again, Beechwood is a poor example because there wasn't. Any rules back then.
Right.
But there's an example of ex- excessive runoff that has done road damage, culvert damage, buried utility damage. Because none of this was in place back then, I think, if they were building under these rules today. That would probably all be fixed because those lots are small, a lot of those lots would have triggered stormwater management if they were being built today.
I think the, I don't think I know what happened up there, after working at Loom for so many years, was that. The infrastructure that was at the lower part, lower part of Black Mountain Road, even upper Black Mountain Road, was not built. With any type of hindsight, looking at, it was so much private land still above there that all that drainage, if they developed all that, it would come down. And. You'll see that today when you take a look at these branches of Pemmy, and see the way the South Peak is, so all of that land. Um, that was once forest trees is now, there's a lot of hardscape and it's all directional, it's directed at where it used to be all trees, so I mean, that, that's. Typically what's, what happens and that, the stuff down below is built earlier and then all of a sudden they. The stuff up above, the land up above may not have been built on for years and years, and it's all of a sudden, a developer buys it or a homeowner buys it, whatever. And then they build something on it and directs more water down to the lower stuff, just not, hasn't been designed to take care of it. The same thing with the, the size of the water mains, the sewer mains, I mean, a- all of that stuff is that way too, but typically, we don't have a whole lot of. I mean, it's not, the washouts in the roads, some of that from the older stuff, you're right, up on lower Black Mountain, you know, but that's because. Whoever thought they were gonna do Beechwood two, no one ever thought they were gonna do Beechwood two. Like I think, we built Beechwood two, I was there, I did it, we built it up around and it stopped. And it was never thought that they were gonna go up there by Queens Bay or the part where Jack Dale lives, that was always, you know, who knows when we're gonna get there. We might not get there for a hundred years, guess what, there, people are there, you know, and that's what happens, I think, in a lot of these places, but. It's, it's the beginning, looking at what's in the, at the bottom, maybe, but I think that out, I mean, or, or suggest taking it out, I really think. That history hasn't shown that it's been detrimental.
Okay, so, let, let me ask this. Right, right now, there's two ways to do a, a, a subdivision. The old way was you made the subdivision and anybody, everybody, first of all, there wasn't stormwater management, but everybody had to worry about their own stormwater management. Now, when you, we get a subdivision, that subdivision has to include a stormwater management system based on. X amount of square footage of the buildings.
All disturbed, okay, yeah, impervious surface.
Correct.
Yep.
Alright. If, if. Take any subdivision, what if the owner of that lot wants to build something? Bigger than what was part of the subdivision approval. And most likely part of the alteration of terrain approval, any big subdivision is gonna have an AOT, okay, so, so, so. This one I bought.
Are you talking about like over here, instead of putting houses, they wanna put a big hotel?
No, I'm saying, this subdivision was, was, um.
Basis design.
The basis of design was on fifteen hundred, twenty-five, twenty-five hundred square foot of impervious surface, which includes your house, your garage, your driveway. Okay, I, I'm buying that lot, but I wanna do thirty-five hundred square feet, but it still doesn't trigger stormwater because my lot's big enough.
If your lot's big enough, and you, and you don't disturb the, the amount required. Then what's gonna happen is you, you're gonna retain the natural features which are going to absorb and, and, and not. Create that runoff, and that's why you have the, to me, that's why you have that calculation of how big you have to. How much you're gonna disturb before you actually have to do something, because other than that, you're not disturbing the natural features, so why would you wanna? Make somebody, you, you understand what I'm saying?
I, I understand what you're saying, it's just that our fifty percent rule is somewhat, fifty-five is somewhat arbitrary. We, we picked that number.
But it has.
Whereas, whereas if something has gone through alteration of terrain permit, uh, design critique, right? It, it, the, as the whole subdivision. Um, can take care of all the water runoff that is being produced, now, because I'm building a bigger house. I'm in effect creating more runoff, now, now, the amount of runoff my land can, can absorb. Already is already been calculated, now I'm adding more to it, granted, I haven't triggered it, but that has already been taken into account by. All the engineers that have designed and reviewed this through the, the applicant and through the, the. Um, Wetlands Bureau, yeah, who, who look at AOTs.
But I see what you're saying, thing about it is, is that you're not going to. Historically, take a look at it historically, because that's what happens, we haven't had any issues with people who were building like that. And we've, we've had, had that happen here in Lincoln, I mean, people are building and are not having those issues, so sometimes I think that. Why do we wanna make it, make ordinances and regulations when we really haven't had an issue with it, you know what I mean? Or a big issue, you know?
What happened?
Because each person.
Did, did they, did they have to do stormwater when it, because they, they disturb more than.
Yeah, that was. That's prior to the ordinance, which, which.
We can't do anything about, I mean, what?
I know, but it always makes me wonder, if we had had stormwater management back then, they probably both would have triggered it, both lots. And I bet to the situation, it would be different.
I mean, if you, I mean, if you take a look at Forest Ridge, for example, this thing's supposed to go on, there it goes, if you take a look at Forest Ridge, for example, I mean. That wasn't a, a problem with the development as much as it was a problem with implementation. You know, I mean, the stuff, the, the water that came down. The people, or the developers who were responsible. It wasn't being taken care of, and that's why it was creating that problem, since all of the meetings that happened and all the stuff been done. Has there been any real, real problems, like, I mean, we haven't had any water running over. At, at where Avery's used to live, or flood in the whole area back there, so, I mean, some of those things are designs that, that were. Supposed to be done that didn't get done, or a reason.
I don't, well, we didn't have stormwater management back in the eighties when SADA built that place. And I think that that was the cause and continues to be the cause of some of the problems.
No, no, because that's a planned phase development, so everything, every phase that they have has to comply with the.
I think some of the previous pha- phases are causing issues.
But I don't, I, right.
The eight, the nineteen eighty-six developments, or eighty-nine developments, were developed based on the rules back then, which, there's no stormwater management. So, so. That increased water.
But we have that now, we have stormwater management.
Right, we can't, we can't go back and. So.
I mean, so, I mean, and it's, I wouldn't think that we were right to do that, but we, that's why I say, I mean. We haven't, I guess part of the thing, OJ said, we haven't had to consider this ever, since I've been, since I've been part of the board in. Over a couple of times, I don't know if you've ever had to have any consideration, or Jimmy, maybe, you might know, have any consideration, brain type of a steep slope problem, so. If it hasn't been a problem for the, historically, I just. Why have it, it just seems like it's another thing you have to mitigate every time you're trying to help somebody, you know?
No, I think, I think the consensus is to take that out, what I think.
That's why, uh. Don't have to take a vote on it and do that, or how you wanna do that?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have to send her off to public hearing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, just totally no.
Alright, so the, we're gonna move, um. We're gonna make a definition of adequate usable space, it's gonna be, um. Small i paragraph A, it's gonna be, say usable space is any portion of a lot or structure which is designed to be or can be used to support development.
Right.
And then we're gonna add the definition of usable space excludes, we put paragraph one in its entirety.
Yep.
Paragraph two in its entirety. And then we're gonna say land covered by wetlands, water bodies, watersh- and watersheds, and watersheds as defined by New Hampshire. Wetlands Board Rules as amended, administrative rules WT, etc. And natural drainage systems, after that.
Yep.
And then we're gonna take out.
They go.
Paragraph four in its entirety.
I agree with that.
Anyone else have any thoughts or additions?
I, I agree with that, I don't wanna vote on it tonight, I wanted.
No, we're gonna send it off.
Take a look at what, how the New Hampshire Wetlands Board Rules define drainage systems and see if it. Um, see what it says. Is it, is it the same as what we're calling natural?
No, 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 no.
Does it, does it work?
I agree, because I, I've looked at it.
That's. Then, then I, I think we, um. Do we wanna define natural drainage systems, or is natural?
Anything that's not man-made.
Not man-made.
Yeah.
So, so this little. Dip it in the land that runs water down when it's raining, is a natural drainage system? That.
So put natural in parentheses, not man-made, or something like that.
That's, that's fine.
I mean, I don't think it's necessary, but I don't object to it.
It, it will definitely make a distinction.
Natural, arrow, parentheses, not man-made.
Right.
Alright.
You know, no matter which, someone's gonna try and split hairs, so.
Right. If it says not man-made, then.
That's, alright, that's it for this. Um, any public participation? This gentleman have anything? Anybody online, hey, oh, Mike, how are you?
Hi Jim, this is Mike Donahue Senior.
Hi Mike, how you doing?
Good, I'd like to know if I could, uh, address the board. Okay.
Casey, hold on, Mike, who's Casey Karanas?
Yes, he's the landowner that I'll be property, I'll be talking about.
Okay.
Good evening.
Evening. Go ahead, Mike.
Um, alright. Casey, as you see, Casey owns lot seventeen up on Bogbrook Road and Parker Road, which is a lot. I used to own there on the Shack Corner.
I don't have anything.
Um.
Okay.
Bogbrook Road, is anybody, everybody familiar with it? It's a.
Is this your old land, Mike?
Yes, yes.
Bogbrook, is that the one?
Casey owns it.
Before the bridge?
Yeah, yes.
Or the bridge?
Right at the bridge, right at the bridge.
Okay, go ahead, Mike. Yeah, we're having trouble hearing you, but I.
You, are you able to hear me?
No, like, turn off, off your video, take off your video and, and your audio might come in better for us.
It'll free up some bandwidth.
Try it now.
Yep, try that, can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, much better.
Alright, alright, Casey owns that lot, that's a four point three three acre lot up there, he bought it from me a year and a half ago or so. And back in around May, he, uh, put in a. Land use permit. He wanna move here, he's married, he has two young children, he wants to. You know, he's gonna build a house here, be a full-time resident and join the community, so he, he has a general contractor that turned in the application form. For the building permit, or land use permit.
Okay.
And then he, so it got turned in, and then he got in, an email back around May fourteenth. From Lisa Paluso, that works in your office, I guess, and it said that, uh, he needed to do a new land survey. Because it appeared that the existing survey was old, so that's when he called me and I. Called Carol, and just wanted to know why is there a time limit on a survey, it was professionally done by, you know, a land survey. Nothing has changed up there, there hasn't been any law. Adjustments, there hasn't been any subdivisions, you know, that was obvious, they knew that, um, but yet she said that he man survey. And I guess I didn't understand that, so. I had a conversation with Casey about it, and then back and forth with Carol a couple more times, and things really weren't progressing, um. It's kinda, the conversations were breaking down and, and weren't going forward. So then I went further and I asked her about, um, you know, I, I said, well, we don't need a stormwater management. Cause he owns a hundred and eighty-eight thousand square feet. He's only disturbing, um, at the time, we said around six thousand, seven thousand square feet, so he didn't meet any of. A stormwater management plan. And then she came back with an email on May twentieth. Where she, um, told me, no, we had to have a new survey, just because, uh. Um, what she had told me verbally, and then that I could, uh. Get a waiver for the stormwater management plan, and I kept arguing the point that I shouldn't have to get a waiver because I didn't. He didn't trigger it to have a stormwater management plan in the first place. He's only disturbing eight thousand square feet out of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand square foot lot. Um, which, as you know, you've just been talking about it, he's allowed to disturb up to seventeen thousand square feet of fifty-five percent of the lot. Um, so he didn't trigger it, where he needed a stormwater management plan, so her and I went back and forth again on the telephone about it. Then she got sarcastic with me and asked me if I was gonna laser, cut the hole when I dug it. I was gonna actually, you know, dig it with a laser and not, you know, and so that's when things broke down. And he's been sarcastic with me, so I said I hadn't, I don't need it from her, I mean, I just don't need it. So, I talked to Casey, Casey said, well. Steve Tower come and sur. He lets, he had Steve Tower come forward and survey the lot again, um, Steve surveyed it. Um, laid the, the little. On the survey where it was gonna be, like I said, remember now, this is a four and a half acre lot. I don't know when the last time you guys saw a four and a half acre lot come in town with one house on it. I mean, it's very rare, you know, um, so, so we did that and, and Steve put the setback. So showed that he wasn't encroaching and, and turned it in, and then. Yeah, what happened is Carol. Around gave his review, well, yesterday, Casey got a email back from Ray Corber, and now we got a whole laundry list of things we need. Um, he's saying that, uh, it's not in compliance with the land use ordinance. Steve turned in. And that, uh, he needs a grading drainage erosion sediment control plan. A water and sewer connection driveway erosion and sediment control plan. I'm just frustrated, I mean, this is a. Existing lot, there's not even a tree on the lot to cut. It's already gravel pad, flat. Pad where the house is going. There's not even a tree to cut. And I went and spoke to Nate. A little while ago, because Carol wanted me to do a waiver on the driveway permit, there's been a driveway there for fifty years. Um, up on the hill is where Bunky Ramsey used to live. Um, you know, years ago, if you're familiar with that house, it's. Hill there. There was always a driveway there, and Casey has an easement through there, the person that owns that house has an easement. But it actually belongs to the state of New Hampshire, because they own a big chunk of land back. So that driveway's been there, there's, and Nate said he didn't need anything, he said there's an existing curb cut there and it's a driveway. Um, so I didn't, I told Casey, don't fill out a waiver, I mean, why spend? Whatever the money is, and it's just not needed, there's already a driveway there. So I guess we're frustrated, and he just wants. Permit, so he built his house. Um, and. You know, she told me all back. Three, four weeks ago, when we were having these conversations on the phone, she told, you know, things kinda got. So we weren't gaining, and she told me, oh, call the town manager, the town manager was out. Just got this email yesterday, I tried today, and I guess she's out for a while. So I didn't know where to turn, so that's why I'm coming to you guys. Um, you know, it seems like we're making something big out of this, all he's doing is big, building a single family home for his family.
You have any?
I, I'd like to hear from Carol.
Can she use the microphone so we can?
A little more complicated than that. He had an old survey, there's no setbacks on the survey, there's no area of disturbance, there's no. Um, there's no place where it shows where the house was gonna be. And, you know, he just thought that he should be able to sketch, I mean, I'd have to look at it, it's been a while. And I think some of the conversations that you talked about were not with me, but they were with Karina. So I don't know. I don't know what she has talked to you about. All I have, and I, I haven't looked at the emails back and forth. But I do know that when. When people. Submit their application, they have to show the area of disturbance that they anticipate. They will be disturbing, they have to show the setbacks, and they have to show where the house is gonna go. With the measurements, and I believe. That Karina has had conversations. And emails back and forth with I, one of you, I don't know which one. And then in addition, your neighbor. Then complained that you had. Like buried. You know, he filed a complaint, which we didn't wanna have anything to do with. And we didn't have anything to do with it, he filed. A complaint with DES about stuff that was buried on that lot. So all we've got is a notice from DES that a complaint was filed. So I have no idea what the status of that is or anything. And it hasn't affected how we are processing your application. Your application needed to comply with the requirements of. You know, the survey requirements, and when I talked to you. Or I can't remember which one of you. Um, you know, I said that you had had the survey done, and so it should be relatively easy for that. The person who did the survey to put the information that was needed on the survey. And it's no different than anybody else, I mean, you wanted to know if anybody else had ever done it. So I sent you all kinds of samples of other people who had to have submitted that. So, I, I, right now, I can't remember all the exchanges that we had, I'd have to go back and look. And Karina's not here, so I can't ask her what her exchanges were with you, I don't know.
Jimmy, can I address that now?
Go ahead, please.
I have not had one single conversation with Karina, I have never had a conversation with her since she employed. So, I don't know what Carol's talking about, that I had one. Um. I had asked her if I could see some sample. What other people said. She gave me five sample. Sent an email to me. And they were all.
Mike, I think you have to shut your video off again.
Um, I don't have it on.
Yeah, we, we can see.
See you, there you go.
Alright. Alright. Uh, where'd you lose me at? Uh, so she did send me five. Sample. Yep, and they were all postage stamp lots. Which had to have a rose, uh, stormwater management on them. You know, your setbacks were within a feet, you know? Um, of boundaries and this and that, they, they weren't even representative of what we're doing, all we wanted to know was. Wants to see a plan, see what other. Submitting, I weren't questioning who else was submitting them, that weren't what we were doing, we just wanted to see. Criteria. We don't trigger the stormwater management plan, why do we have to do it? And. Didn't answer. Okay, and that's when he, and she's the one that recommended Steve Tower, Steve Tower multiple times, he can take care of this, okay. Um, so Casey did, he bit the bullet, paid him twenty five. Where the house is gonna set and what the setbacks were. Um. No, we have not done a stormwater management plan, because we don't feel we need to, nor do we feel we need to. But a waiver not to have a stormwater management plan. Um.
When did you submit the plan?
Um, the first plan went. Hey, the very first.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear you. You're breaking up.
Alright, maybe Casey, can you answer some of the questions?
Uh, yeah, I think we, um, we initially submitted, um, the, the land use permit in the, uh, first week of May. Um, and then. We submitted, um, just the old survey with that, um, and then. Just, um, I'd say it was last week or the week before, we submitted. Um, the new, um, survey from Steve Tower. Uh, with the, the setbacks, the area of disturbance. Um, the, the draw, the drawing with, um, the sewer water lines. Um, which I believe, I believe you guys have that there, um, the full size, um, drawing that, that, uh, Steve Tower did for us.
Carol, can I ask you?
I, I don't know, because Karina's, is, is handled.
Why does it go to Karina?
Because we don't have staff.
Okay, well, they're just saying you never talked to Karina.
It shouldn't go to Karina, it should go to Carol.
Just to clarify a question, when, when. Have you heard back from Ray since you submitted? Yeah, it's a single family home, he said he heard back from Ray. Is that correct?
Because. Karina sent it to hit, to Ray. Because it had the area of disturbance, so he looks at it.
Okay. Have you heard back from Ray since you sent in the? Steve Tower survey?
Yes, we, we received, yesterday we received an email back from him, that was that list of more things that he, he wants from us.
You don't need those.
Hey, this is just unreal, well wait.
I mean, he's disturbed, Steve did it, Steve, Steve included the driveway, which is already there, the sewer line, water line, the house. Extra digging around the house, he's only gonna disturb eighty five hundred square feet. It's a flat where the house is going, it's perfectly flat gravel lot, not even a tree on it. He's gonna, he's gonna use, you know, best management practices as far as erosion can go, go, he'll put out a silt fence, he'll put out some straw waddles, whatever. But the water is never gonna leave the property, you're talking a four and a half acre site.
Yeah, and how big is the house?
Uh, what is it, Casey, three thousand?
It's gonna be twenty five hundred square feet.
On two floors?
Uh, yes.
Well, I haven't seen it, it's.
Okay.
Karina must have it.
I mean, it's, seems like it would defy logic that it would. There would be any question whether or not it would trigger the stormwater management plan.
Look, I think all, all, all he needs is. A. Land use plan permit to get going, he's provided everything that's, that he needs to, that everyone else has to provide. Um, he's not disturbing. Any of the lots, I don't know why it went to Ray, doesn't need to go to Ray unless, unless he meets some of those other requirements, like. He's disturbing more than seventeen thousand square feet or.
No, we send them out to Ray, he gives them a fifteen minute look at and sees whether he needs to or not.
I don't ca- Carol, we shouldn't have to give it to Ray. You should be able to tell whether or not needs to go to Ray.
Okay, right now, right now, the whole place is my place.
This is the place, OJ. This is the place. It's a little ridiculous when someone comes to the plan like this, OJ.
I agree.
And, and we get to this point, and. The gentleman who wants to build on it can't build on it, because he's meeting all the requirements. Something's not right.
Okay, can I tell you what's not right? We're missing an employee. And we're missing another employee. Okay, one, one.
Look, look, then, then that's.
Someone has, someone has.
Should be doing, is you should be hiring temps to be able to come in and do what you gotta do, okay? And if you can't do that, then someone should be stepping in your shoes, so, so.
Okay, alright, let's.
But I mean, I think the thing is, is have an engineer go on.
You're sitting here pointing fingers. Okay, that's, that's not helping, let's, let's solve this guy's problem, alright?
Problem I could do is give him a land use permit.
Okay.
He's meeting all the requirements. This is bullshit. How many times we gotta go through this?
Okay. Cody, do you wanna say something, give a hand up?
The driveway there in eighteen ninety five is my great grandfather, he'll put in. And it moved then, still the same place, for the railroad end in eighteen ninety.
Okay, let's stick to this lot. I don't think the driveway location is, is at all an issue.
That's been there for about a hundred, twenty five, hundred thirty years, though.
This is a plan. I think we can just direct the staff. To act accordingly and give him his permit.
And to see if it beats the boundaries back. It's all marked and backed with red paint on the fourth service property. State of New Hampshire surplus property. If you look at those, you look at those dogs and trees, exactly where the bounty is, they survey, actually surveyed every ten years by law. Marked in the name every ten years.
Okay. Alright. So we're gonna wrap this up, how old was the original survey, where they somehow claimed it was old?
I think it was.
Six, I believe.
Eighty eight, I think.
Eighty eight, so, okay.
Yeah. By Roy, Roy Saban had done it in eighty eight, that's, um. And, and there'd been no activity there as far as subdivision, lot line adjustments, anything of that. Um, I do wanna address what she said about the neighbor filing a complaint with DES, yes, they did.
Okay, I mean, it has nothing to do with that, but, but address it anyway.
I'm addressing it, and, uh, that was, uh, a month ago, more than a month ago now. And what it was, the, the guy that bought, um, Kim Stratton's old house, which was Bunky Ramsey's house, he bought it a year ago or so at auction. He went in and he cut. All the trees next to the driveway, which was on state of New Hampshire property. Cut all the state trees down, the state noticed it, they came in. And he cut them so he could get a view. Which is a beautiful view there. Um, so the state came down, and I was involved with him too, actually. And the state basically slapped his hand, said, you know, we're not gonna find you, just smatting up. So then he found out, right then, he found out that Casey's gonna build this house. And he didn't like it, because it's gonna block his view of the mountains, he went down to town hall, because I had the conversation with Carol, and Carol knows why he was disgruntled. Because he told her. He's blocking my view, he's gonna block my view, she's the one that directed him to go to DES and file the complaint with him. Which is fine, got no problem with that, when I ain't nothing up there, I've had conversations with DES. There's no findings. Um. But that's what it's all about, this guy is upset that Casey's gonna build a house and block his view, that's how DES got involved. Eh, you know, and that's as simple as that.
Okay.
And he came in, like I said, to the office, tried to find out if the town could do something about it, spoke with her, she's the one, she told me, she directed him to go to DES.
Alright, alright, thanks for that information. Anyone else have any other questions?
Can we, can we try to find staff to?
Well. Was they not here, so? The planning.
This was the planning board that has got. North County Council has ample people on staff. Let me finish.
I got it, I'm listening to you, John.
You probably, me, you probably won't.
I will.
The past, they didn't want to set the planning board. To get it on a per diem basis. On, and their remark was, whatever you want, we put in, it's your town, not ours. They came in, set up the staff, did bookwork. The per diem base, they have, they have, they have experience in land use projects. In the laws. And if we hire them on an ad hoc, on an ad hoc basis. They came in per diem. You don't have to pay him retirement, you don't pay him medical. Still, he's paying for the hourly wage. The thing is, you get staff that has experience. And knowledgeable. Work with the planning board. To help them out.
That's what our town main interest is, is supposed to be doing. If they have, if they have a. Lack of staff, they're supposed to be reaching out to different. Different places to find out where they might.
Out there for a land use technician, just.
What's that other one? What's another administrative, uh? Company that.
Municipal resources?
MRI. I mean, you know, there's different places you can look, I mean.
Okay. So. OJ, you're the, towards the Asian to administration, would you follow up with Karina on this?
I will, yep.
Alright, so.
Get back to Mike, have someone get back to Mike or the gentleman here, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
That's Casey.
Well, have, have Karina, whatever, when she gets back.
Okay, so Mike and Casey, we're gonna look into this.
Okay.
Okay, we appreciate that, Jimmy.
Alright, enjoy your evening.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Alright, is there any other business?
I have some.
You have some?
I have some other business, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to suggest that we hire. Another. That we direct the planning staff. To look into hiring another engineer. Um, not get rid of right, but to hire an additional engineer within the town. We've had people come in, even to this board and make complaints, concerns, complaints about. How long it takes, and it's not just. The developers, there's been individuals too. But. I think that. We should be ahead of this. And not, not behind it. And I think we should. We should investigate looking into hiring an additional engineer. I mean, it's, the, the money gets escrowed, it's the responsibility of the plan of board to. Decide who we use.
Yep.
I talked to Karina about this, she's aware, I'm sure she talked to the.
Yep, so we can, alright, so we can, if everyone's on board, we could ask Karina to put out a. See if we can find somebody.
Ask Carol, yeah.
Okay.
She's the, she's the planner, ask her to.
Okay, does anyone have any objections to doing that, it'll help speed things up?
Some stuff we had hosted Franklin. Tilton to get the minutes. Major, major. Like the site plan of you. Mitigational water, everything else, we had to admit in two days. Million dollar project. You get a house, a building, a small house, like a. Home from south of town, take it three, four months, you admit, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could do this on a rotational basis, that. It doesn't all need to go. To Ray, it could go Ray, and then whoever else is on, it, it could just rotate back and forth, so. We're not putting all our eggs on a basket, I mean, and, and it would, who knows? Bring up some race time to do some other stuff if he, but. It definitely. It's definitely needed to be looked into, because we've had these issues, and we keep sidestepping them, and I think it's time that we.
I had, like you're saying. Good idea in a way, but you could have one engineer. Doing small project. Ray doing the big ones, he's on the site, he's following through it along, he knows what the, what the concept is.
Yeah, but it's not fair to, it's not fair to. If you're gonna put something like that out, you wanna give. Tip for tat, you wanna say, okay, you can have this one. And maybe a small, and the next guy gets the big one, the next guy gets small, if, if one guy's getting all small, he may not wanna be there. So you gotta kinda keep fair and say, look, it just goes here, here. And, and that way there, there's always.
Look, you got a second engineer to take, do some of the big project, take some. Look, you got a second engineer to take, do some of the big project, take some some work off of Ray's plate.
Just add a point of information. Um, this is new to me since the last planning board, but but um, since the last planning board meeting. But one thing that I learned. Is that an applicant. Has the right to request. Their own or their own chosen. A third party reviewer.
I'd like to see that.
It's it's it's, I believe it's in in the. It's either in an RSA or it's in the Office of. The OEP, whatever, Office of Economic and Economics and Planning, I don't know what it is, anyway, it's it's in. The state. Either laws or rules.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, OJ, because the only ones I have are six seventy-four, six, six seventy-three, sixteen. Uh, six seventy-six, four B, they all speak.
I'll 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 come back with whatever the official.
I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, but. Doesn't it seem like conflict, like I can hire my own?
No, it has to be a third, so so if. Joe developer comes in with horizons.
Right.
Okay. We're gonna have a third party look at that.
Right.
Okay. Um. They can choose someone who did not do the design, who did not work on the design.
Okay.
And we can um. Deny that with. Um, if if we see that there's a conflict.
I mean, if that's a rule, that's the rule, well.
I I'll look into that further and bring bring that back, but.
A, B, and C and X, Y, Z can just be going back, you'll be the designer and I'll be the reviewer.
Take a look at six seventy-six, four dash B, write that down.
Say it again?
Six seventy-six colon four slash uh, hyphen, whatever you wanna call it, B. That's that's the RSA about third party review and inspections.
What does it say?
It it pretty much says that the planning board retains the services, I mean, it's child required detailed. You get, you can get detailed invoices. But. Um. You you're supposed to be getting detailed invoices, the planning board, if the planning board requires a third party inspection. Um, during construction process. Are you supposed to develop a scope for the project and the inspections? It goes down through, it goes down through all of it. And then six seventy-three colon sixteen, staff finances. It says that. Um, that the fees that are paid out. Shall be paid out by the municipal treasurer only upon order of the local land use board. Or its designated agent for such purpose. We're supposed to be authorizing it, I think maybe at some time we might authorize Carol, but. I think we ought to be, the planning board ought to be the one to. Uh, it authorizes the use out of the. What kind of? Escrow funds. You know, to me, oh, hey, look.
How many, how many escrow funds do we have right now? Like, like. A lot being twelve or a lot being fifty or a lot being, yeah. Or more. I think it's closer to a hundred.
I'd like to see, see which ones they are, because I don't think there are that many.
That's I would think, I would think that's public record.
Yeah. I like to see the escrow funds. Because I, I mean, you know, you need to have a little control, so it's not just a slot machine, so whenever you wanna.
Okay, so who has those, who has those records, the escrow funds? It's a town treasurer?
Town clerk.
Sorry. Karina has, okay.
The treasurer.
Finance.
It's a, it's a, there's supposed to be a custody of the municipal treasurer. Right, so she'll know, so she'll know how many escrow accounts you have.
Okay. Does something you guys wanna see?
I'd like to see them.
Okay. So, to the treasurer.
Supposed to be, it's those. You're supposed to get detailed reports, and that's a matter of. Uh, planning board retaining services under paragraph one A or two shall require detailed invoices. With reasonable tax descriptions for services rendered. I don't know.
This is the engineer that builds against those.
Against those escrow accounts.
Okay, do we get those?
I've never seen them, I like, I mean, I'd like. See what they are, who's ordering them, I mean, you know.
Okay. I mean, just. For efficiency sake, I don't think we need to. Look at all one hundred, but maybe some of the larger ones.
Nice to see him, yeah. See what they look like, see what he's willing for, but anyway, if we get another engineer. I think it would. Would help a lot.
Yeah, I I I think I agree with that, mm-hmm. Guys, have any issue with that? If we try and locate another engineer? No. Okay, so. Who's gonna put the request? Who, you're gonna ask Karina?
Carol.
Yeah, ask Karina.
It work, no. That's not how it works.
Okay.
Right. That's why I said Carol, she's the planner.
Right, okay.
Well, the planning staff works for Karina. But.
Alright.
No.
So I guess, how would you like to get the ball rolling?
I would like to ask Carol to see, put out a request from an engineer, or she could talk, she can talk to Karina, I mean, is that the reason why she can't talk to her? It's no reason, I'm not saying it has to happen today. But I think we should start the ball rolling.
Okay, so. How about, how about I talk to Karina prior to the next?
That's fine.
Do it that way.
Yeah.
That's reasonable.
Leave it in your hands.
Does anyone have anything else?
I have a question, I, and I heard that, you know, there's. There's some proposed for development along the Pemmy River. So, is that true?
Are you talking about that? Talking about the Pemmy River, I think he's might be talking about that, those two ladies that came in.
I heard something, some group will wanna make the Pemmy, Pemmy River was a scenic river or something.
Okay. Let's just have that conversation as declared with what it is. Right now, the Pemmy Joe asset river. From Ted Waters into Frank, in Franconia. To where it joins the one of Psaki. In, in. Tilton Franklin. Is.
It becomes Merrimack River, right, becomes Merrimack River with the two joint.
So, so the Pemmy River starts in Franconia and it. That name ends in. Franklin.
Right.
Um. Is, um. Is a group called the Pemmy River Local Advisory Committee. And that, this is a state sanctioned state.
You're on.
I want it. Um, state, um, directed. Advisory group and there's one for the. All of the major rivers in New Hampshire, I can't name them all, but is these local advisory committees. Their job. Is to, um. Look at any. Um, development. Um, uh, violations, uh.
Use of the.
Erosion problems, use recreation, whatever, along the river, um. In in that. The length. They get notified of any alteration of terrain permit, of any violation. Um, to, it just advise, they look at it, they look at what's going on. Um. And and make. Recommendations to what's generally the wetlands. Uh, wetlands. Recommendations like as far as this is not a big deal, it's a big violate, I mean, or or. On a violation, they may ask, like, the the only one that I was involved with, since I've been on that, is, um. Oh, there were, there was a massive amount of trees cut beyond what was allowed. And the DES was asking for, um. Restoration, a restoration process. And in. Board, the look, the Pemmy River Board looked at it. And just added that along with the restoration, that we. Development that was gonna go in on that piece of land. Not be allowed to start until. That restoration was at. X, X percent or X, you know, so in other words, you can't just. Blow some grassy down and start digging next door, that you had to wait a little bit, mature enough to to catch the run. Um, and that was just a suggestion. DES can say yes, they can say no, they can say, yeah, it's a good idea, but and change it. It's justified. They look at alteration of terrain permits, like when the Owl's Nest. Um, is looking to, uh. Add on and build, actually, um. They wanted to either, eh, eh, make a lake or relax the lake that was there, but it was within the Pemmy River. Watershed. Uh, close to the river. They got to weigh in on setbacks, um. Uh, I forget what other things we had talked about, access with the road, who's gonna go, things like that. Again, all advisory, just their thoughts go to the, um.
I guess if, if there's already setbacks are already regulated, how do these? How does this group like override that?
They don't override it, all they do is advise, they say, look at this, you should, you know, should consider this, um, it it's stuff like that. Um, there was a campground that was looking to be built in. A, um, flood zone. And. There was. Only one road into it and it was, it it was in the flood zone. So in other words, if the campground flooded, the road flooded and you couldn't get out. And this suggestion was alternative or secondary. Means of egress to get in and out of.
And one of the things I've asked OJ was, do they look at access to the river? Because. Through all of the developments happening in Lincoln, we've lost a ton of access to these branch. And he said, yes, they do things like that, but they had already left.
So, so, so anyway, this. Um. All of the towns along the Pemmy. Are members of this board. Except, except Lincoln and Woodstock. In, that are not.
Right, that's.
That's true. So, so, um. If there's an alteration of terrain permit along the river in Lincoln or Woodstock, they don't get notified of. They still have a right to. Comment on it, but they generally don't because they don't get notified of. Um, I sit on the board representing Lincoln, Jim Cheesebro sits on the board representing Woodstock, so. They allow representation, but we're not, we're not members. And so they they were here, at here, but in this room, at a board of selectmen's meeting, just kind of explaining what they do. And it was not a hard sell, you were there, they just said, you know. If at some point we do wanna become members, there's a process for doing that, you need to be, um. Not appointed, but authorized by state legislature, because state legislature. Made these local advisory committees and determined who were members, and we were not, because we chose not to. Years ago.
I remember. If you represent. My chief of war. Any trail they put on in, in Lincoln on the river. It's forever in their domain, you would have no control of it. That's why it was going down. Ten, fifteen years ago, by the people in Lincoln. I thought. We wouldn't have the autonomy, they gave what you wanna, in their own direction. It'd be done by the people down along the state, all about state. And the past three weeks ago, I got a telephone call. A woman in Kansas. Asking about the, where the. As best as dumped there in Lincoln. It's been mitigated, I told them stuff to mitigate where this, but this and that and therefore. And she, I kept telling her what, what was in the ground, what's got, what's been mitigated by the, through by EPA. Check by the FDA, federal government. And still wanted more. Said, I'm gonna try to, it just, then she made a comment, not trying to. Figure out there's a chance. This is what, I got the numbers of the house. They got trade numbers back, it's a separate. Company ship, that's a twenty million dollars behind them. It's kind of crazy, doesn't it?
I guess, what does that have to do with this committee? Is she on this committee?
No, but. They're probably same party to. Trying to get stuff done.
Fine.
I guess.
OJ, does the town lose any? Any sort of local control or local?
Yeah, supersede our local land use laws, I think, because.
Well, well, I don't know, I mean, so if they start going in saying something that. The town Lincoln doesn't like, can the town Lincoln say, hey, whoa, wait a minute, this is not what what we support, that would be my concern, that. If if they're going in a different direction other than what. Town really wants, can the town say to them, look, we we don't wanna go in that direction?
First of all, they're an advisory group.
That's all.
Okay, so 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 all they can do is advise what's generally the DES.
But they're speaking for a group of towns and. If Lincoln does, maybe Lincoln doesn't wanna be part of that because they don't want anyone to speak. Be my question.
We we apply for an urban exemption along the Pemmy River. So that's. Surely, yeah, surely in Protection Act.
What'd you say, we did?
We did, back in ten seven. What's that? Yeah, okay, so I mean, it's town is not, you know, really. Interested in designating the Pemmy as a. Protected body.
Where, eh, the, we have no role in that. Right, is, I mean, that's. That's not what they're about or what what they're looking to do.
Okay, but I mean, I guess the question is, don't, isn't there enough regulation in pocket without having six or eight, ten people having to say?
I, that's, that's, that's an opinion, um. Generally, th- these, the people on this board are are. Um, have a vested interest in the Pemmy River. In the clean water, in the, you know, uh, animals, plants, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Well, I think, I think those are live along. They're familiar with the river, we hear Joe all the time talking about the history of Lincoln and he knows this and that road was built in eighteen forty-two or whatever. Or eighteen, these are people, okay, sorry, I wasn't listening, these people have a vested interest in the Pemmy. And and share that advice and knowledge or history, um, when looking at applications, um, for the state, it's, as I said. They don't control trails, they can't enact any laws or regulations, all they can do is go to the wetlands board and say. You know, here's some facts you are unaware of, here's some history you're unaware of, here's our observations from from. You know, being, living on the river or working on the river or being familiar with the river. It's, it's just an advisory group that speaks to the wetlands, generally the wetlands.
But the concept is. I remember going for good, they're the only town. Make the state sue their working behind us and act the dude that I said was group. This happened in mill, this happened with the mill. The Pennsylvania game club lost all employees because of the same scenario. So a few came in, went after the mill. And do it so they lost the entire, ninety-five percent of the. Of their, of their. That's the only staff and members. Because there, a certain few rivers, they. Bigger issue. Than the people in in the club wanted. Could be, we did standing, yeah, standing class, they had clear book in them. Didn't want to develop across the river. They wanted five hundred foot setback. The river.
Who's they?
The board of directors, Claybrook wanted to. See for the board, it did, all it did.
Before the planning board.
Before the planning was the Jeff.
Wanted a five hundred foot setback from what?
For some of the.
They'll be in built. That's why he told my, told me, uh, told anybody to, I agree to it. That means the new building that is burned down could be rebuilt. They never, they never include any of their. People, they never asked anybody in the. Of the, wrong to the former association. They're paying for the certain group that has in for one person. On the other side of the river. He even made that comment, they mentioned they could rebuild the buildings that burned down, they were, they were, they were within that five hundred foot setback. They dropped.
So is that the intention of the? Board of Selectmen to join us now, or?
You heard the presentation, right?
I I did.
And you heard the, our discussion afterwards.
Yeah, but I was kind of unclear.
Okay, well, that's. That was the result of that meeting.
Okay, so there's no intention, okay.
So what's, there's no, no.
No, I'm not saying there's no intention, I'm saying. That there was not any in-depth conversation of the board to make up a decision immediately, that it was something that is, eh, eh, it was a. The invitation was. A longer range thing, this isn't something that they were hoping to get an answer for next month. It's like at some point, this community may want to and we would have to go to town meeting and. But it would take a process to get there.
But it would take a process to get there. It's like. It's like, okay.
Those are.
That's, that's where we left it.
Is a board considering bringing it to town meeting?
You heard the board discussion, Paul, I got no indication of that, I mean. We we didn't.
I didn't hear anything, I wasn't there.
Okay.
So what did, the board has not decided yet, is that what you're saying?
The board has not discussed it. Right, therefore, yeah, they haven't decided, they haven't even discussed it.
Okay.
There were some comments made afterwards.
Time be it. For the time be it.
Well, it would be, I I would think it would be a good idea if the board was considering doing it, that it. That at least the planning board could weigh in on it as well. Prior to make, prior to the board making a decision.
I think there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for people to weigh in on.
Alright.
Okay, does anyone have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Sir, second, all in favor? Alright, good night.
Pull your battery.
Oh, yeah.
No one leave.